We'll start the meeting. Those of you that have cell phones, please put them on vibrate or silence, please. Can we stand and do the pledge of allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moving on, we have item number one, which is the minutes of July 8th. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes as may.
I will.
Second. Discussion. Those in favor with motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, saying aye.
Chairman, I move on the claim.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor with motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I say. Item number three. We have the Human Resources Department. Approval of the memorandum personnel transactions. I will send that around for signatures. Is there a motion on that memorandum?
Love it.
Second. Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, saying aye. Discussion in action on the county activities policy for economic development. We have that in our agenda material. Discussion on that seems to be that this affects our economic development department on how that department will conduct itself when they find potential businesses that may want to be attracted to Woodbury County and how those expenses would be allowed if there's a lunch or a dinner or whatever. And it seems pretty straightforward to me.
It's straightforward state law from regulation. So we copy regulation almost all for.
I'd kind of like to see the chairman approve those things because it should be known well in advance, I would think.
Yes, that would be fine. It should be known in advance, maybe some occasion, but whatever.
Yeah, there might be a few. There could be a few.
Keep it. It's entertainment's always an expense that has potential for views.
Yes.
Can we keep on up to that?
Right.
Jason, just that one is just informal thing. Otherwise, we have to add another checklist for the documentation for approval. It's not been that way.
Pretty documentation for, oh, for approval from the chairperson? No, it isn't that way.
Yeah, it's not been that way. So we will table it and bring it back next week. We're talking about.
I don't know. That's, it depends on board, what the board wants to do here with that.
You're talking about prior to.
Prior to its.
Prior to knowing.
If you've got a, if anything comes in, you know that, you don't want to say a day. There can be occasional, say a day.
And it might be a situation too where, let's say, the economic development person is out of town, Washington DC or Fort Worth, Iowa.
And it doesn't only apply to this, the economic development person. This is anybody in Woodbury County who's working on economic development.
On behalf of the county.
Right, yeah. This is other electors. This could be depths, could be chair, I mean, other supervisors. I don't know what this covers.
Well, if that's the case, I would go for pre-approval of the chair because with the department head, you might have, you know, a little more knowledge. But if it's, you know, the sheriff doing, or not pick up the sheriff, but are you, the auditor for economic, economic development, I mean, there might be, I don't know. It's open ended.
It is.
It's a little open ended. They're still comfortable.
I think we ought to have go over and bring it back next week. Right, so we'll put together, we'll put together.
Private approval on some occasions, but there'd be some that we won't have because if this person or whatever is out of town and if something crops up and happens, they're going to have to hold it forward. Okay. Postpone any decision on that until next week.
Do you have a motion to postpone?
Move it.
Second.
Okay. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, saying aye. Item number four. County auditor receive appointments for Lawton City Council.
Mike, will he be appointed?
Second. Discussion. Those in favor with motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, saying aye.
She did offer her.
Discussion. Those in favor with motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, saying aye. Okay, item number five is a letter of support for the communications accreditation for law enforcement for created. Everybody get that in their agenda material. Understand that.
I love it.
Second. Those in favor with motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, saying aye. Item six, the I would drainage association.
Good morning. Good to be here again and talk to you all. Bring it today on several things that we've got going on. First of all, I do want to point out that several weeks ago, we delivered these books to your county staff. We undertook the process of republishing all of the road and drainage laws in the state of Iowa. We found out that this reference manual had been done previously by a private attorney, but they were long out of business, did not indicate a desire to redo this book. So I talked with the board about it and got the approval to proceed. So we have done a complete compiling of the drainage and road laws of the state of Iowa. Like I said, these came off the presses in December of last year. We have delivered these out to the counties. We will update these on an annual basis so we don't get in a situation again, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road where we've got a hopelessly outdated book. So we hope and think that it'll be helpful to our county membership and to our private trustees that are out there. Secondly, I'll visit briefly about legislation this year. We had a very active year in the state legislature and we had a very successful year in the state legislature. IDDA went in with three proposals and we were successful in all of those. The first proposal came out of Webster County where the drainage clerk there called it to my attention that there was a thousand dollar limit in state law on drainage laws. And we found out that that limit had not been increased for many, many years. She emailed me later and said, you know, we just had a drainage project for $320,000. That's 320 warrants to keep track of. And she said, you know, that's ridiculous. We agreed. So we went to the legislature and asked that that limit be increased to $5,000. That did pass. It was sent about 2191. That did take effect July 1st of this year. So that $5,000 is now in place. Again, that is a maximum. So if you want to go for whatever reason with a lower amount, you can. But that did pass and become law. The second bill is sent about 2273, which actually originated in this county. It relates to drainage districts that had private trustees, privately elected trustees as opposed to the board supervisors as trustees. And I had attorney representing those districts from this area contact me and said, you know, that the state law that defines who is eligible to be a trustee has not changed in many, many years. What has happened is, you know, other parts of the law have changed and there are many and many different ways of only ag win. Limited liability corporations and trusts and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. None of those of which were dealt with in the drainage law. And he indicated that he was having trouble finding people to be eligible to be trustee under the strict definitions that were in the law. So we expanded those definitions to include other types of ag ownership. We still limited ownership. We didn't want, you know, renters to be drainage district trustees. You still have to have ownership. Types of ownership are now broader than they used to be. That took effect July 1st. The last bill was House about 2344. This, I've been with IDDA since thirteen years, for thirteen years, and this is the biggest drainage bill we've ever passed. And it had its origin in this part of the state. Started with, it was during river floods several years ago. And I had some districts down in Harrison County, Monona County, Potawatomi County that basically were trying to put the pieces back together. They know we had damage. They had drainage infrastructure that was totally destroyed. And they found out that drainage law is really pretty good at maintaining the status quo. But if you're trying to start over, it doesn't have the flexibility that they need. So they put together a group of privately elected trustees and supervisors to sit down and go through the law and make a determination of what they needed to see changed. That was introduced as a bill draft in December of 2012. The actual bill draft did not come out until funnel week of 2013. So there was no time at that point for anything to get done on it. At that point, we took the bill draft and we edited it. We sent it out to our membership. We sent it out to drainage attorneys and said, okay, here's a bill draft. How do we get this to a point where IDDA can support it and it still helps the districts that are trying to get this thing passed? We did a substantial rewriting of the bill, took that into the process this year and were able to get that passed. Three major changes it makes. First of all, there was nothing in drainage law that allowed districts to be combined, drainage districts to be combined. And what they found in western Iowa was that as a result of trying to put things back together, they found they had drainage districts that didn't know they existed. And of course, drainage districts under drainage law, once they're created, they're perpetual. They stay in existence until such time that they're resolved and you have to take affirmative actions to resolve. So they had drainage districts that didn't even know they were drainage districts. They had no trustees. They had nobody running the show. And of course, what they were trying to do in these cases is take somebody's inactive districts and merge them with active districts so that there was active management of the district. So the first thing we did is allow drainage districts to combine. Second thing we did, we found out, for example, you all, those county supervisors, when you serve as trustees in the district, you have certain liability protections that are afforded to you under state law. We found out that private trustees did not enjoy those same protections. So we changed the law to reflect that a privately elected trustee has the same kind of protections that a county supervisor would have. We also found out, for example, that there was nothing in the law that specifically allows drainage districts to buy insurance protection. All the law says is that a trustee, be it a supervisor or a private trustee, can spend money for the benefit of the district. Whereas insurance for the benefit of the district. I mean, I think you can make a point that it is, but it is still questionable. So we cleared that up. The second thing we did was look at the bidding thresholds. They're in state law and we raised those, that those are consistent with the other public bidding statutes that are in state law. So three major items that were addressed in that bill. I'm pleased to say that of those three bills that we took into the process, we got all three of them passed through both sides to the governor's office, signed by the governor with one note of which was. Which was a legislator on the House side that really had a side issue that had to be in the legislative. But that's, you know, we would like to have a quicker, quicker, but we got one though. So we had a very successful year. Last thing I'll talk about and bring to your attention, I don't know if you all are aware or not, but there is a proposal that has come out of Environmental Protection Agency that would basically greatly expand the authority of EPA to regulate waters in the United States. This had its origin several years ago, about ten years ago, there was a case out of Chicago called SWANG, which was the Solid Waste Authority under Woodbury County. The SWANG case came down to the simple question of, does EPA and corporate engineers have the authority to regulate wetlands? And EPA was saying they did. And the basis that EPA used, the claim jurisdiction was as follows. He said, wetlands, ducks like wetlands. Ducks have commercial value because they're hunted. So obviously, you have, you ducks can fly so they can cross state lines. So therefore, you have an issue with their state Congress.
Oh, my God.
That was the basis of his news. And that went to the US Supreme Court and the US Supreme Court said, no, 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 not so fast. What the Supreme Court said was, the EPA and the court, you only have the authority to regulate because Congress gives you the authority to regulate. And we have never said specifically that you have the authority to regulate wetlands. Therefore, you don't. So that's what the Supreme Court said. Since then, EPA has been, and that's twelve years ago. What resulted from that decision was sort of mass confusion. Because then what you had happen was all these regional EPA offices issuing guidance to their field staff and what this meant. And the guidance was all over the place. So you had different interpretations of this federal ruling all over the United States. Since then, what has happened is EPA has been trying to position itself in a way to assert jurisdiction. And they are doing that in this proposal that is now open for public comment. And EPA is using the principle of what they call nexus or connection. And they're basically saying that any water that has connection to a water in the United States is going to be regulated. I think that clearly means drainage districts, I mean, you drain somewhere into a water, it's going to be called jurisdictional. Potentially, it could be that you all, anytime you do drainage work, you're going to have to get a Clean Water Act permit. That's not an easy thing to do. In some cases, that can be up to a two-year process. This is going to have dramatic impact on the ag landscape in the state of Iowa. These rules are open for public comment. They're open till the end of October. I will tell you that I talked with the IDDA board of directors about this last month. They authorized me to put together a special meeting for our membership on it. We have done that. We have a meeting in Fort Dodge on August 20th, which is going to be a half-day meeting. We've kept the location central to those drainage counties. I know Fort Dodge is, and we'll do central for you. We got to go somewhere. We've kept the meeting a half-day and we've kept it cheap, $15, which doesn't include the new lunch. I sent information out to our membership on Sunday about this and we hope that you or somebody from your staff can attend that meeting. This, EPA is basically saying, all this overreaction is hysteria. People are reading things into the rules that aren't there. It's no big deal, is what EPA is basically saying. And what we're telling people to do is that what EPA is saying about the rules and what the rules actually say are three different things. Indeed, the rules, it is a big deal. So we are encouraging our membership to find out about this and hopefully encouraging them to get to the point where they can make public comment, come onto the EPA website and make public comment before these rules are finalized by EPA. So again, that's August 20th.
Okay, good, good.
When are they expected to be finalized, did you say, for those?
Well, who knows with EPA? I mean, you take the removal field stand. Rules on that are supposed to be finalized earlier this year and they said, oh, it'll be July. And now they're saying it's not going to be July. I mean, who knows?
So when could this go into effect if it all went well?
Well, the rules that are out for public comment, the comment is supposed to close October 20th. Ideally, what's supposed to happen at that point is EPA is supposed to pull all the public comments back in, that the revisions according to the public comment. Who knows how long it would take? I would guess that's next year before they put anything out. And of course, then, it's, you know, even if, even if they're promulgated, then they can always be challenged in court. And I think that no matter what happens, they're going to be challenged in court. You could also have Congress getting away with those rules. And that is something that is potentially very likely at this point. We already have a majority of the House of Representatives, bipartisan majority of the House of Representatives that has gone on record telling EPA to back off, not to promulgate this rule. We're working to try and get that done in the Senate. So this is not going to be something that happens overnight. I think it's going to be a long haul. But, you know, I guess from their perspective, the best case scenario would be sometime next year.
We'll keep us informed. The meeting in August in Fort Dodge will be an important meeting to have a representative there to express.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Do you do 99 of these?
No. We have approximately 25 counties that are members. And I do each of them. Each member runs it once a year. That's my commitment to the board. And I.
Appreciate that.
All right.
Thanks, Don, thanks. Okay, item number seven is the board administration. We have a property sale parcel that is 253050. We need to set a hearing date on that.
Set it on July 29th at 10:15.
Okay. Second. Those in favor with motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, saying aye. Item eight, secondary roads.
Good morning. I'd have to say, I'm enjoying Mr. Torbert and a lot of those concerns as far as the county engineers association. I am planning to prepare a comment to that docket.
Good, that's just.
And our state association is as well. This would affect virtually everything we do, right down to just roadside ditch cleaning for the purpose of maintaining road drainage. Those have never required permits either at the state or federal level. And this is just a clear example of some regulatory overreach, in my opinion, as far as EPA wanting to regulate this. The Corps of Engineers has been a very responsive agency when we do work, whether it's a bridge culvert replacement or whatever is currently under the federal regulations where we're required to get permits. Typically, we have response in less than five weeks. I think that's very good service. State of Iowa has tried to really improve their service as well. They're in that five, six week area too, and they used to be 90 days. We throw drainage districts and roadside ditches on top of virtually anytime we want to touch one of our roads. And I think those agencies would grind to a halt. I'd say, you're talking about some of the current Clean Water Act studies taking a couple of years. That's really just a small part of the picture. These agencies would also be flooded with these new permit requirements. Work they're already doing would also be slowed. So it is a great concern. If the board would like, after I get it done, I'll send you a copy of my comments. I think it would be useful if you guys trying to let it as well.
Absolutely, absolutely.
First time I am on the agenda is the approval of contract bid bond for BRS 0867, parent 601. This is the Bronson Bridge. Total contract price, $1,299,064 and 30 cents. $1 million of this is federal aid bridge funds. The remaining $299,000 will be coming out of our county foreign to market funds. This is a bridge that is 50/50 owned by City of Bronson in Woodbury County. We're replacing the bridge, the pavement between the bridge and a short bridge that's right at the intersection. That short bridge is also being replaced with box color.
Okay, neat. Second.
Second. When's this supposed to be done, Mark?
It'll be done by November. Working day start July 28th, I think.
Those in favor with motion indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, saying aye.
We'll be cracking up. They've got a lot of work to get done. Dixon is. We've got work started now on Christians and Brother Bridge on Michigan Avenue. All three of these are within, with Dixon. They're all scheduled to be done in late November. Our next bridge is L 136, $508,087. It's on Pocahontas Avenue, east and south of Correctionville.
Okay, motion.
Love it.
Those in favor with motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, saying aye.
I'm sorry, I had that backwards. That's the one on 185th. This is the one on Pocahontas Avenue at $497,757. Oh, I, all I did was I handed you the wrong contract. I'm sorry. You've got H 109 in your hands, George. We need approval of H 109 as well. That's the one on 185th.
Love it.
They were in my folder in the wrong order. I'm sorry.
Those in favor with motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, saying aye.
That's, that's it for today. We're still working. We have not heard any information yet on confirmation of whether we're getting FEMA or Federal Highway Administration funds. We have turned in one report to Federal Highway. The review's been done. I'm just, this is my first day back in the office, so I've got to make sure that's signed and that it hasn't been returned to us for correction. We are working, you know, as early as we can to assist us with repairs.
Could you give us a little review on 240th? Are we making any progress there with?
We're, we're working on in-house on the design of the road. Ben has preliminary design for me to review when I get back to the office today. We've done our right-of-way research out there. We know what we need to acquire and or avenue. We only have 40 feet. That's where the road was established at. All of that was taken off the east side of the center of section line. So for whatever reason at that, at the point in time where the road was built, the landowner to the west side of the line chose not to assist in the right way because the original condition was for 66 feet wide, but the actual decision on the establishment was 40 feet wide and outlined to the east side. We'll get what we need from both sides of the revenue to make it work. You should be seeing a contract in the next two weeks from our consultant for the land acquisition, JCG Land Services out of Aitney will be doing that work. We've got B and K who is doing the planning and the survey work. You know, all of that work is ongoing, so we are working to get this pushed as quickly as we can for budget.
Okay, good.
Is there a land swap developed on 140?
We are working on the land swap with CF. And between CF and one of the private property owners out there. Nick started work on that last week. We met with him on Wednesday down in CF, or Tuesday before I left town. The gentleman's out of town until next week. Paperwork's being prepared for that swap, so we will, as soon as I know, we'll do that. So, my good guys know.
All right, good.
I was out on 108 in Canada. Actually, pretty rough out there. Yes, it's getting a lot of truck traffic right now. And I've instructed. And I've instructed Forest, and this is trying to get work in around everything else we've got going on down there, to bring, um, grab a lot out there that we can properly crown that road. I mean, we're having to start treating it more like a truck haul road now that the Peterson Farms operation is really spread out to that area and stops with every cap operation, so. I'm afraid that's one where we, we're a little, I'd like to be more proactive generally, but as much as we've had District Five involved in the area south of the airport, this area hasn't gotten quite the attention that it should with the increase in traffic that it's looking at, so. It still does not qualify for the county put-down dust control under our policy. I will be requesting next year with the new traffic counts, that we get new traffic counts out there. We'll see if we can get a classification count. By classification count, I mean a count that shows percentage of trucks, cars, and equipment, that type of thing. DOT doesn't always give those to us in the off-year. Every eight years, we get a full system count. We have that in 2011. But every spring before they start doing their counts, they do contact our office, and we're able to make requests for special counts. We might also be able to borrow some equipment. Problem however that is, it doesn't come available to the ball. That's a length account because of seasonal variance, you're going to have more traffic, especially truck traffic at home. I would prefer to get that as a more representative count in the summer months, so that's all we're starting to do.
Mark, you can have these back.
Thank you.
Are you substituting for Dave?
I am. Unfortunately, he had a conflict with his schedule, and he's enjoying attending a economic development training, so he asked me to fill it for him. I apologize for letting you take it. He asked me to come and kind of go through this presentation. What we're doing is seeking their approval to enter into an agreement with CGI Communications. What they do, basically, is it's a video showcase packaging, what, this is going to show us what they will be able to do for us. It highlights Woodbury County at no charge to the program either. CGI Communications is a leading provider of high-impact marketing solutions to counties nationwide. They are one of upstate New York's top growth companies, receiving multiple top one hundred awards in the greater Rochester area. CGI is a premier corporate member of the National Association of Counties, and has a large number of digital marketing tools that showcase and promote the National Association of County members. In fact, and it's because of our relationship with them that David was able to connect with CGI and talk about reporting and other film. Essentially, CGI proposes to come to Woodbury County to film and produce a series of six one-minute promotional videos that we can use to highlight the county's quality of life and economic development opportunities. The finished product will be maintained by CGI and stored on their servers. All that we need to do is insert the video widget into our county's homepage. There's an example of what it will look like, if Karen can put that up. It's sticky.
George, do you want to?
Want to take over?
Yeah, right? Should you ever want to see it?
Sorry about that. So, ahead of time, one of the more, most important things to remember about this is it's free to the county, there's no charge. CGI does all of the videoing, all of the producing, and maintains it all, so it doesn't cost anything.
How can they do this free?
What they do is set up sponsorships with local businesses, and they'll be, they would be working with David. He'd be working with, like, the Tabor Conferences and things like that, instead of just taking them up by surprise on the cold calls, saying, you know, this is what I want to do. I've looked at some of the videos and stuff, and they are produced really, really nice.
So basically, exactly.
Right, right. They have a little block on the page, there's a little block of the sponsors, and they can be nonprofit sponsorships also, at no charge. Pottawattie County is, has taken advantage of this also.
As David run this by the county attorney?
It's right there, Karen.
I'm not sure if he had it or not.
Right there. This is P H five, slight.
What would the concern be?
There's a lot of things here that tie the county up. It might be a great deal, but I'd like to see it run by the county attorney first.
Okay. I did read through it after I got it in the packet. I didn't see anything that jumped out at me as a red flag. I think we are committing to it for three years, but it is clear in that there's never going to be any cost to the county. So I, from that aspect of it, I don't think there's much to lose here.
So you don't think you need to review it yet?
I could give it a closer look if you'd like me to, but like I said, when I read through it quickly, there wasn't anything that jumped out.
It seems to be we're giving them exclusive rights for a period of time in their subsidiaries. I'm not a attorney, but I don't think that needs to be.
And I wouldn't think there'd be a rush to do, to approve it today, so I could certainly take a closer look, and then come back next week.
Okay.
This is an example of what the county is doing.
Benton County offers a picturesque backdrop to your everyday life. Thanks to our moderate climate, our community offers opportunities for year-round outdoor pursuits. The county's excellent location not only means that the river and desert are immediately at hand, but that the trails of the Rocky Mountains and the beaches of the Pacific Ocean are each within a five-hour drive. Cultural opportunities abound, as our community supports multiple farmers' markets, theater companies, festivals, museums, and galleries. Transportation infrastructure is excellent in the tri-cities area, and our well-serviced airport provides quick and regular access to several major air travel hubs in the western U.S. Social and community services, such as emergency services and healthcare providers, are well-coordinated across jurisdictional boundaries throughout the community. Each of our major cities has a large, modern hospital, and response times for emergency aid, law enforcement, and firefighting are excellent.
As you see, it's good quality. We can pick the time of year that we will have the video shot, which should be probably right around this time, would be a good time with the progress and all that activity going on and stuff. We'd be able to have six chapters in our video tour book. Not only would this be a great tool for potential residents, but it'd be also, we'd also be able to put it out for site selectors and corporate projects. Like you said earlier, the great thing about this deal is that there's no cost associated with it. They make their revenue by selling sponsorships to the businesses in the county, and they'll appear in the video player, as you saw. CGI is responsible for the sponsorships. We have, we don't have to sell anything. The cost of a business sponsorship is between one thousand and three thousand, depending on what they want. If they choose to have their business logo displayed and have it on the link website, they can do that, or they can have CGI produce a commercial video for them. And like I said, nonprofit organizations won't be able to participate at no charge. Their sponsorship will be displayed on a specific chapter as local organizations, and it's really a good deal for everybody. The only thing that we have to do is provide CGI with a letter of instruction, or introduction on our letterhead that states that we will be working together with the Holmes Project. They can use that letter to introduce themselves to potential sponsors, and that's it, that's all that we would really have to do. Whether they get zero to a hundred sponsors is totally up to them. They take full responsibility. As you can read in the fact sheet, we refer businesses to them if we choose to, can recommend businesses for them to contact. And David Quest, we're closely with them with regards to who we contact for sponsorship. He'll also work with various Tabor Conferences throughout the county as well. The agreement is for three years. If for any reason we want to terminate the agreement, we have the ability to do so by putting that in writing thirty days prior to when we wish to end the contract. If for any reason we need to make any edits to the content of the video, we can do so at no charge. Most recently, our neighbors, Pottawattie County, have worked with CGI and had their video showcase produced. Their video looks great, and they've been really satisfied with the production and sales team. With that being said, it is the recommendation of the Royal Economic Development Department that Woodbury County interests in this agreement, and so we can start to schedule production of the video for this summer.
Do you, do we get that on how many views that we get, we provide that?
I'm assuming they have that information. I guess I don't know for sure if I can ask David that.
Can this be used on commercial TV?
I'm not sure about that, since it's their, their own production and things like that, I'm not sure what the agreement would have to do with that.
I've seen this before through the Sheen Highway folks, I think, with Ben coming in Washington, and did it for the Sheen Highway.
Yeah, I, you know, I think it's pretty impressive, the video that they put together. And of course, like we said, it's, there's no charge to us, and they do, they take care of it all, so.
I don't see a downside to the Sheen.
I didn't either when I looked at it, but maybe I don't care what, but sometimes.
It's free, and we can back out any time we want.
Right.
What do we lose?
I don't know if we're endorsing something we don't know anything about, I'd be much more comfortable with the attorney looking this over.
Well, I don't think there's any pressing timeline on this, so I wouldn't have a problem with having our attorney look at it, as long as we don't have any kind of a liability, you know, backing out of a penalty or anything like that.
Right, right.
Even though that is free.
Right, yes.
And in three years, do we want to obligate ourselves to three years? Do we want to do it for two years? Three years seems kind of long to me. Is there a possibility of shortening that time period down to two years?
Okay.
And then, if we don't like it, we can step out of it. Well, we can step out of it any time.
Right, or there is a, a slave clause, I guess.
Yeah, there is. I would say, let's let our attorney look at it a little more closely, and then come back with the recommendation next week.
Can I give you that, Lord?
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome, thank you.
You should have a motion table.
Okay, your motion's tabled for one more week. Your second?
Second.
Those in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Okay. I don't tend to seem to have any individual or group wishing to make a presentation on that or not on the agenda.
We've been talking with Nick DeRusse, who's the CFO down there at CF Industries. And we tentatively scheduled a tour for the Board of Supervisors, July 29th at eleven o'clock in the morning. There's a few details we've got to work out, mainly they have to talk to all the contractors that are mobile down there. Make sure we aren't interrupting a twenty-hour call or something they have to do right away without interference.
When?
July 29th at eleven o'clock.
You're going to confirm back with us?
Yes, she's going to get back to me later this afternoon. And, you know, once they talk about having like a little mini bus break, I'll get on, and we're all prepared for the tour, so.
Okay.
They'll rather have a board agenda much sooner when we decide that.
Right.
But it'll just be, kind of show and tell, and then I'll see what it looks like.
Will the media go to that?
I'm going to check with them, but I assume with some board agenda, yes, they can probably come. Once they're on the premise, they do limit sometimes what you can't take pictures of, which is important, they have to establish and understand with a project like this. So I assume they'll probably do it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Anyone else? Board members?
I've got this from, this gentleman called me this morning, and it should be considered for products.
This is some staples.
Yeah.
Okay. Similar to what we talked about with the city a couple of weeks ago, is that what this is?
Yeah.
I'll make copies of it and provide it to the rest of the board, and see what we go with that. Anything else? Entertained motion to adjourn the meeting?
We adjourn.